Thank you, Amber. Good afternoon or good evening, everybody. Thank you very much for attending the special meeting of the Norwich Board of Education on July 7th, I'm sorry, July 13th, 2023. And the time now is 6:00 PM, which is scheduled to start of the meeting. Amber, if you could, would you please call the roll for the attendees?
Sure, we have Chairman Aldi, Al Daniels, Gregory Perry, Carleen Sharmelus, Kevin Seatani, James Paulson, and Mark Kulos. I believe that Heather is not here, and I just want to make sure I'm not missing Christine. I do not see her.
Christine was indicating that she was having a problem with the connection. Heather Fowler has already sent an email, I mean, a text message. She is locating a location for herself to get a quieter place. But we do have a forum, correct?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much. Can you bring up the agenda for me, please?
I'm sorry?
You, please bring up the agenda for me.
Oh, sure.
Thank you.
Pull up board docs and then share that, share my screen. And I know Bob Serpensky is going to share also.
I just want to, because I can't get to my board docs.
Good evening.
Look, Christine, how are you?
Good, thank you, Bob.
Meeting is in session.
It wasn't working on my iPhone.
Okay, the meeting is in session, and we are being recorded. Thank you.
I'm also getting an error with board doc, so I'm just going to pull up a PDF of the agenda for you.
Thank you.
All right, I see that Heather joined us also.
Great, excellent, thank you. Thanks, Mark. Okay. In keeping with the agenda for the Board of Education's special meeting, we're under unfinished business. 2.01 action item, it says, "A discussion and possible action regarding the 2020-2023-2024 budget." With that, I will turn this over to Dr. Stringfellow, please.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. As you know, there have been several meetings that have occurred, some on behalf of the generosity of Senator Austin, some with our Commissioner and our Commissioner of Early Childhood, Charlene Russell Tucker and Beth Bye, and certainly Linda Allen in the School Readiness Council yesterday. Yesterday? My days are running together, forgive me. And so, we, the update of where we were is that at the last Board of Education meeting, the Board had voted to support students who were required to receive preschool by state and federal law. And that would envelope a number of students, both students with disabilities and students who would be community peers. But it was certainly not the level of preschool slots and offerings and opportunities that we had previously. There were, as Bob has reported to you, some significant budget savings in closing one school and then moving two office buildings into that location. And then the eventual and hopefully fairly quick process of turning back the buildings to the city. And what we had started out with is two sections of preschool contemplated for Huntington School, both of them being partial day programs, meaning AM and PM, and two at Veterans School and two at Mahan, all partial day AM and PM. Except for one school Smart Start program, you'd already received the Smart Start Grant Award, and that needs to be a full-day program. So we went from six classroom spaces, and we have now added five more. So we are up to 11. The configuration is that there would be three programs at Vets, two partial day, AM and PM. The class size is a tricky thing for preschool, because like in any other configuration, you certainly don't want to max out class size. That's just not good practice. And so, because the classrooms that they are, have been relocated to are handicap-accessible, full-size classrooms that either have a child-sized lavatory within the classroom or very adjacent, but certainly closer than if their classroom at Bishop had child restrooms at the end of the hallway. The, all parties agree that the slots could be available 17 to 20. And so, 17 is what Jenna would earmark as the highest class size, but certainly over the course of a year, as three-year-olds turn three, she would have spaces available. So there would be two full-day programs at Vets and one AM/PM partial-day program at Vets. There is only enough space at Mahan for two programs, one full day and one AM/PM. At Huntington, there would be three programs, two contemplated as full day and one as AM/PM. And at Moriarty, which is a new site for you, there would be two classrooms for AM/PM and one full day. When you add in our students who receive what we term walk-in speech-language services, Jenna accounted for about seven or more, because that's always a variable number. We could accommodate between 289 to 327 preschool students. When you think about that in terms of slots for school readiness grant funding, that would be five school readiness partial-day classes, AM and PM, and five school readiness school-day, school-year classrooms, and one school-day, school-year Smart Start classroom. And that would give us 93 full-day slots for school readiness and 153 part-day slots for school readiness. And just as a reminder, there was a change in Office of Early Childhood policy. It might not be a reminder, so as a reminder to myself to tell you perhaps for the first time, we have been reminded by the Department of Education that there was a change in Office of Early Childhood policy that was made effective July 1st, 2023, which allows the 50% full-day requirement for school readiness funds to be achieved with the school-day, school-year, and not just the full-day, full-year. And so, with that regard, different than in June, we would not need to seek a waiver in order to comply with the school readiness grant application. Full day is full day. Certainly, there's a difference in services to our families, no doubt. But in terms of eligibility for school readiness funding, that seems to be in alignment. The School Readiness Council did meet. Mayor Nystrom is here, and so is Linda Allen. They graciously offered to come tonight if the Board has any questions of them. But from what was explained at the meeting is that their next regularly-scheduled School Readiness Council meeting is on August 9th. They may be able to contemplate a, I don't want to speak for them, but they may be able to contemplate a meeting earlier than August 9th if they understand the metrics that, you know, if they're able to, in Linda's words, crunch the numbers, which is understandable, so that they can present it to the School Readiness Council for a vote. That's step one. And then step two is that the Office of Early Childhood would either approve or not approve or make recommendations. I didn't realize that it wouldn't be a vote, and that it made sense to me once it was explained. So I was contemplating that when I came here this evening, I would be able to say to you, and it's been adopted by the School Readiness Council, we're just waiting for final approval from the Office of Early Childhood. I can't say that to you. So I was, you know, forthcoming to the group and said, "What can I say?" What I believe that I can say is, it appears that we, in this configuration, we will have more slots, quite frankly, for community programs and students with disabilities than we've had certainly during my tenure. I can't speak to how many slots were available prior to the pandemic year, and that we will be able to meet our requirement for slots for school readiness. And when Gemma Tenor, who is our early childhood coordinator, spoke the last time to the Office of Early Childhood, it seems if any money would be at risk from grant funding, it would be, $4,000 is a lot of money. So I don't want to say only $4,000, but there could be plus or minus $4,000. And that's because of the formula and the metrics that she has to work on on her side. And if there are any questions, I'm happy to help you understand. And if not, certainly, I know that the mayor and Linda Allen have a really good handle on this as well.
Thank you, Dr. Stringfellow. I just want to make sure, and for my own indication and for the people who are on this call right now, what we had in the prior, before we made this vote in, in June to cut the school readiness or the closed Bishop School, what was the number, what were the numbers that we were facilitating for the, for school readiness pre-K and K? And are we at that same number or above it now?
Total number, we're above it. In terms of configurations, it is, it's a bit different. And so, we have the, we have, from Jenna's calculation, we have the same number of all-day slots and partial-day slots for school readiness. And then there are slots in addition to school readiness, like Smart Start, and then we'll just want to say other, to meet our needs for students with disabilities and community learners. The major difference is it was all at one school. Well, actually, it wasn't. It was, it was at one, two to three schools last year. And now it would be at four, but a majority of the program was at Bishop. That's where the cost savings came from, and that there were full year, full day. So 7:00 in the morning till 5:00 at night, all year long. I think that there are, you know, perhaps two weeks of the year off, but it's full year. That, that, that was another significant savings. It is a loss in terms of the community's eligibility for that within the Norwich Public Schools. But our partner districts, our partner facilities are certainly trying to pick up those slots. But they've been replaced by school day, full-day, school day, if that makes sense.
Yeah, as a result of the July 1st, excuse me, July 1st decision by the OCE, correct?
It's, now, I want to make sure I'm properly answering your question. The decision to eliminate the full year, full day was a budgetary decision. But the eligibility to still receive the full amount of reimbursement in the school readiness grant is now permitted. Because, you know, how they editorialize that is, it's a struggle financially for everybody. And so I think they had to put this in as an option, or else other communities, you know, like Norwich, were struggling to find staff and to provide that service. The way that Commissioner explained it, one of our meetings is, many of the other districts can partner with YMCA or a, excuse me, with a YMCA or a Boys and Girls Club or recreation program so that they, as a school department, are not doing the seven to five, if you will. And as you know, we don't have a YMCA or Boys and Girls Club. That's, it's been harder for us. And it's harder in urban districts to attract staff. At some points, we've certainly seen that.
Thank you, Dr. Stringfellow. Questions from the Board, please? Carleen, I see your hand raised. Go ahead.
Thank you, and I apologize that my camera is off.
Don't worry about it.
I just had a quick question for you, Dr. Stringfellow. In regard to the number of slots that were full day, full year, I don't know if you could provide us with that number? And then, what was the total cost saving for removing that aspect? And then, and then my last question was, if, I know that Senator Austin came and joined us at our last meeting, and you've been having some additional conversation with the state, if there was a possibility for us to be able to, I guess the question is, is there possibilities for us to potentially accommodate full day, full year if we are able to get that funding from the state? I understand that other childcare providers are taking on that responsibility right now. I just wanted to ask those three questions.
So I would have to look back in my notes to find the number of slots we had, because that varied. The number of school readiness slots, I know that Linda Allen can share, but the number of full-day, full-year slots that were occupied varied on a enrollment basis. But we had three classrooms. So we had two classrooms originally at the beginning of this year at Mahan and one at Vets. And then the one at Vets, the coordinator of early childhood moved to Bishop so that they would be better supported. And so, we're talking about three full-day, full-year programs. And in terms of the funding, we've not contemplated, that's not something that was asked of us. We've not contemplated what would the funding or staffing look like to reinstate that. I can't speak for Senator Austin or any monies that are available beyond this Board and this, you know, council. But it was significant. Bob did cost out, that it was about 4.4 or 4.5 million of the cost of our entire preschool program. But I don't know if Bob is prepared to give you any, that number. I don't believe that he is, but I don't want to speak for him.
You all set, Carleen? Stop. Carleen, you all set?
I was just waiting to see if Bob had any response, and then I will be all set. Yes.
Bob? The, I had the actual numbers. We have a year-end report that we do. It's called the EFS Report. It's due by September 1st. So I had actual dollars for '21-'22 school year, and it's broken out by local funding, state funding, and the total was about 4.3 million. When we met with the legislators and commissioners, they asked to come up with a cost per student for the whole program. So I was able to go through and look at the data we had today. Keep in mind, it's unaudited. It's not going through the system. And it was roughly about a 4% increase over the prior year, so that came in at about 4.4 million. And I think if the enrollment was 236 students, or give or take a couple, it came out to around a little plus or minus $19,000 per student to run the whole pre-K program, including all sources of funding.
Thank you, Bob.
Oh, you had your hand raised?
Actually, my question was the same as Carleen's. After that nice discussion we had at our, at our last meeting, it sounds like we got almost all the parts back in, just at a different location. Beautiful. I applaud the administration for their hard work. It's the full, it's the full-day, full-year part that we need to find an answer to, and it ties back over. So we need a number that we can ask Senator Austin for, for us to reinstate that. So we can, because that's where we know it has to come from. It has to come from the state or the federal government. We can't, we can't move our budget any further. So we need that number in the next, as soon as possible. That was my only point. The same as Carleen's.
Thank you, Al. Thank you very much.
Bob, Christine Distasio has a question. She's on page two, so on my screen, so.
Christine, stop. Christine?
Christine, you're muted.
Sorry about that. Thank you. I'm still confused about the school readiness grant. So if we weren't part of school readiness, we wouldn't have to provide full day. Is that my, am I clear on that? Yes. Right? Okay. So there's no, there's no local, state, or federal requirement to provide preschool outside of your requirement to provide services for students age three and four with disabilities? And that their program can't be segregated? There needs to be non-disabled peers that are working to the classroom, similar to... They need to be mainstream, like we used to say. And so, that's what you voted on at the June Board of Education meeting to do your legal requirement, because quite frankly, you didn't have the money to go beyond that. And so, the school, you know, readiness dollars, a commitment made a long time ago, a great, great program that affords, you know, preschool and in some cases, that accompanying childcare, which is outside of the preschool day, the early morning and the afternoon hours. But the school readiness funding doesn't cover the costs. And the costs, post-pandemic especially, have gotten significant. And it's, it's not typical for a, school readiness is very complex, Christine. So don't get down on yourself that you have... That's why I'm trying to grasp it all. It's complicated. And the grant funds sort of intertwine. And, you know, we are all in it together, the city and the private providers and us. And so, it's very complicated. And that's why they have a whole group of people who work on it every month. And it has a lot of oversight from the Office of Early Childhood. And so, what happens is that, you know, let me give you an example. Most of our administrators, our principals and vice principals either have a 220 work-year day, work-year, days in the work year, sorry about that, or assistant principals, 210. So they're not here the week of July 4th necessarily, unless they choose those as principal workdays. They're not here perhaps the day after Thanksgiving or April vacation or a Christmas week, the week of December break. So we have to configure a way to make sure that there's supervision of the program. So it's not just the teacher and the parents. And the morning staff and the afternoon staff is also administrative oversight. And then there's also space and, you know, substitute teachers and people who are willing, when you're a school district, you're wired for a school day, and you're wired for a school year. And so it's unusual, but terrific, to be able to offer the community a program that is, you know, an always. But it's been very, very hard to fund, staff, and supervise. And so, it is the most costly, you know, element and trickiest for us to figure out as a, as a school community. So are you saying we provide that 365, well, minus certain holidays? It's providing all year. I don't want to speak out of turn, Linda, so please correct me. If I, I think it's, I think it's 50 weeks, 48 weeks of the year. And that was something, my understanding is, that was something originally that came to the City Council as a choice. You know, how many slots do you think you need? How many slots would you want? What is the configuration of those slots? And they made a decision based upon the needs of the community at the time. And then the School Readiness Council checks in on those slots to make certain. I see that Linda Allen has her hand up, so I will cease my...
I was just, I was just going to try to help you a little bit, Kristin, just to clarify some things. So for priority districts, which Norwich is one of, the Office of Early Childhood, the school readiness grant had a requirement where 50% of all the slots that were in the community had to be full-day, full-year, which was the 10 hours a day. It used to be 50 weeks a year. It went down to 48 weeks a year, which your community programs do, which K Street was a thriving full program when it was in existence. And then, as of July 1, 2023, they, the legislation changed so that the requirement now for priority districts now is full-day, school-day, full-year, school-year. Slots can make up 50%, and the part day can make up the other 50%. So that's what Kristin was referring to about the change. And it's just a change in legislation.
And that started with what year again, ma'am?
Um, so, school readiness has been in Norwich for over 20 years. The full-day program has been run by the public school since, until K Street was closed, and then the full-day slots ended. There was a year reprieve where the 50% requirement was, during COVID, was allowed to be modified. And at that time, the, all of the slots that the school had, that the Norwich Public Schools had, were shifted to all-school day. That was a one-year reprieve. And so this past year, it had to go back to full-day, full-year, because the requirement was still there. And so as of July 1, 2022, it needed to go back to full-day, full-year. The school put in their application that they would go back to that. It was supposed to have opened July 1 of 2022. It did not open until the end of August. And then the decision was made to close it on the 14th and gave parents two weeks' notice to be able to find care starting July 3rd.
Thank you for that explanation. I just have one more quick question.
Hold on, Christine.
Yep. I think that one of the things that you asked is, when was the change in legislation that permitted a community to still qualify for school readiness funds, even if they weren't offering full-day, full-year? And that was July 1, 2023 this year.
Yeah, of this year. That's correct.
So none of this is income-related? That's what I'm trying to grasp off, so.
No, it is income-related. There is a 60%, 60% of the families have to qualify based on their, their income. And so there is a 60% that have to fall under the state median income at a certain level, and the other 40% can be comprised of other levels of income. So it is income-based.
How is that 40% chosen then through a lottery?
How is that 40% chosen then through a lottery process or?
No, they, they enroll and paperwork is filled out. On, you know, they have to prove residency. They have to provide financial information. There is a, in the general policies, there is a whole general policy just on the guidance. And then there is the family fee scale. And then parents, if, if they're working, can also apply for care for kids. If, if the school or if the program chooses to participate in care for kids, then there are some more income that can come in. But, so there, it is, it is done that way.
All righty. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Christine, can you put yourself on mute for me, please?
I think Al Daniels. Al has his hand up.
Please let Ms. Roberta go. She's had her hand up for a minute.
I don't know who Roberta is. And if, Roberta, I have no idea who you are.
I'm sorry, just a community member and part of.
There is, there is no public comment. I'm sorry to tell you that.
Oh, oh, not a problem, not a problem at all. But thank you very much for your acquiesce.
Please feel free to stay on and learn and get, you know, informed. But I'm sorry, there is no public comment.
I apologize. I'm here as a representative from the council. And I wasn't aware that there was no public commentary. So I apologize. I thank you for your time.
Okay. That, my, again, my only point is, and again, I don't want us to lose sight of this. We've now set a precedence since we've been doing this for whatever the, the amount of time is, this full day, full year. Yes, the state has allow, are allowing us to keep some monies and do it a different way. But that's not the part we heard. So all the players are at the table right now. We need to ask that question. Are they going to support these two months and late evenings into the future, or can they? And if the answer is no, at least we know, we can know today and we can stop fighting about it. That's, you know, again, I appreciate what the administration has done and, and what the state has done to help us fix the numbers for the rest of the time. But this is, that's a part of the puzzle that we heard need. We're, we're going to affect a lot of families. We need to know the answer to that. So when we're in a grocery store, we know what answer to give.
Thank you, Al. Mark?
Yeah, my, I, I, following Al's reasoning, I, I just want, if there's any input from the members of the School Readiness Council who are here, notably the mayor and who else is on there, and possibly our state legislators as to what they believe should happen with this program. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Mayor Nystrom?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, mayor. How are you tonight?
Good, thank you. So I've been looking at the chart that was forwarded to us on the slot configuration. Lynn and I have spoke, Linda Allen and I have spoken about it over times on the phone. We met this afternoon as well. We're still trying to understand fully what this represents, but I do have a couple of things that I'd like to say. One, school day, school year slots give you six hours coverage plus particular time on a bus back and forth. The transportation is provided. And really, this program is about maximizing safe, affordable preschool coverage for young families. A configuration like this, where the majority of the slots are part-time, I have to say, does not fit the needs of families in general. It may fit the needs of holding on to state funds. And when I see 289, 327 slots listed at the bottom for a grand total, which tells you that could vary, I have to ask, is this done in order to hold on to state funds? Or is it done to provide services? Because the last time we had a call, I asked about registrations. And I understand that it's somewhat in flux. You never really know how many children, families are going, you're going to need to provide the service for until they present themselves at the door, meaning the school system. But I'm just greatly concerned about the lack of school day, school year as advocated in this document. And I have a question. I understand that we have kids with special needs. And by state law, federal law, we have to provide for them. They all have an IEP. Is there any anticipation in this layout of services? Since the majority of them are part-time, part-day, anticipating that you'll see an increase in those of the IEP needs? And that by holding back some of these part-time slots, you'll have funds available to provide for the child who you can't budget for right now? And I don't know.
That's a great, that's a very good question. And unfortunately, our superintendent has lost connection with the, with the Zoom call. Well, she's back on.
Sorry, we had some sort of electrical hit. I apologize. Was there a question that I missed?
Yes.
If I may eat it?
Absolutely, Mayor Nystrom.
Thank you. Thank you. I look at the total number of 289 to 327, and I recognize that will vary throughout the year. Is there an anticipation that some of these part-time slots will be left vacant? And if so, is that something intended or indirectly a result of having more kids with IEPs move into the district? Do you anticipate holding back any of these part-time slots for that purpose? It's a budget issue. I get it.
So I just want to make sure I understand what you're saying. Would we anticipate closing a slot to an applicant to hold for a, an incoming student with disabilities? Is that what you're saying?
I didn't phrase it that way, but the result would be the same.
So I would say that, what, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, mayor. I apologize. Go right ahead.
Again, it comes down to identifying the universe. And I understand it's a fluid situation. From week to week, the number may change as to who is in need of services and mandated by state and federal law if they have an IEP. I understand that that's always moving target. But is there a buffer within these large numbers, 289 to 327, that anticipates that opportunity where some of the dollars are not being used because the slot has not been filled anticipating more kids with IEPs? That basically.
From Jenna Tenori to me most recently. And Jenna, Jenna's not on the call, right? I just want to scan. She had said, I, I was giving her different scenarios. For example, with the adding of, you know, five additional classrooms, would it be more helpful to meet the needs of our learners? Be it our learners who require school readiness program, our learners who, our students with disabilities, our community kiddos? What, what, of course, they're all in our community, but I'm trying to give you the different variations. What would give you the most flexibility to meet the needs in Norwich? Because that, that's what she does. She, she typically, you know, determines what program best meets the needs of each child. The, the incoming four-year-olds are more concrete for us. And that's always the case, right? Because they either participated as three-year-olds or they were newly identified over the summer, or they moved and they, they've come to registration. So that universe is much more predictable and concrete always in any district in any year. Three-year-olds, Jenna described at the school readiness meeting, knowing, you know, the universe of three-year-olds as it exists today in Norwich. But we don't know until they register, register or come to us through birth to three, if they're going to pick Norwich as their preschooler. Or maybe they, they're not going to preschool or they'd prefer to go to TBCCA. And so the configuration that I shared with you tonight had Jenna's reasonable assurance that it gives us the most flexibility to accommodate all of Norwich's learners. So we had, we have program availability this year, and it wasn't because anyone was deterred from coming. So there were, there were slots available, whether they be a school readiness slot or a community member slot or a slot in the Smart Start. We was, we were not full, filled to capacity last year. So I think the answer is yes. Long, long answer, we're, we're not purposely holding or blocking. But Jenna has a reasonable assurance. So for example, a, a child maybe with, with disabilities, maybe turning three on October 16. There needs to be a slot for them. But that's not any different this year than it would be any other year. This budget dilemma doesn't interfere or co-mingle with that.
Thank you. My questions were not to sit in judgment. It's just to understand fully everything that's in front of us. But I, I do have to go back. It's the school day, school year slot, which is a six-hour coverage, as same as a school day that provides the maximum benefit for young families who qualify. And I worry that we're not going to have enough of those. So what flexibility remains within this? I'm assuming someone in vets or veteran school in the part-time AM, part-time PM, is the same staff that's operating that program in that classroom?
So right now, there are no preschool staff at Vets?
Okay.
So there, there are, there were, there was one full day, full day, full year program at Vets. That, that program was staffed by our early learning facilitators, not preschool special educators. This model assumes all 11 of the classes have a certified Norwich Public Schools, NTL Union Member, preschool special education certified teacher.
And as you pointed out earlier, a lot of that work remains to move forward, to take place. The need to hire, I think you were referring to.
Right. So when the decision was made by the Board of Education, then there is a teacher's contract that needs to be adhered to. And teachers need to be notified before the last day of school, where their placement is for the subsequent year. When, you know, unless there's an emergency of the summer. And so that, that happened. There were some preschool special education teachers who in the months preceding June had indicated a want for a transfer. And in some cases, those transfers weren't honored because it's very hard to find preschool special education teachers. So in some cases, we honored their transfer so that we did, we were not laying off anyone that was currently teaching in the, in the teaching bargaining unit. And so now we have six preschool special education teachers and we're contemplating 11 classes. So it's important, and that is what I expressed at the School Readiness Council, that it, the, the vote of the School Readiness Council is, you know, the next step in, in my mind. And so I, I sort of stuck a little bit unless this board gives me the authority to, to hire five teachers and go beyond my current budget, not knowing if the School Readiness Council will vote yes. Or what, what I had, had hoped could happen, and I understand why, why it couldn't, is that the School Readiness Council could have voted at the last meeting. I understand that it, that it wasn't agendaed in that way. But then I, I would know that I would have the authority because I would have school readiness dollars and to support it. But yes, there would need to be hires. It's a hard-to-fill subject area. And the faster I can advertise within the bargaining unit and externally, the higher probability I will have for teachers.
Thank you.
Peter, when's the next meeting for the School Readiness Council?
It's August 9.
Any chance you can move it up?
I know that we are still, and we've had communication with members of their staff at the OEC. But we have not received guidance from them either. And I don't know that they have fully vetted this schedule. As late as yesterday, the information I had was secondhand, was they hadn't completed their own vetting of this. And I know that the council feels very strongly, as far as taking a vote on this matter, that it is in keeping with the tenants of, of the OEC itself. We don't want to act side, act outside our own scope.
Mayor Nystrom, the members at, at the, of the OEC that were on the call with us for the School Readiness Council seem to indicate alignment. Because with, with our plan, would, is there any, any way that you can give more information about who perhaps I could follow up with? Or what type of feedback you've received that we've not gotten?
If I could, I'd refer to Linda Allen. She is our lead learning for the program, please.
Yeah, not a problem. Linda, see your hands raised. Go ahead, please.
Thank you. Sorry for having my cam, my camera off.
Don't worry about it.
So at the, at the meeting on Wednesday, we had not received any of the new configurations, any, any information ahead of time. It was given during the meeting and asked if we could vote right then and there. That did not give me any chance to review the information, to be able to put it out to the council members. There are protocols and procedures that have to be followed that I need to make sure that in my role as school readiness liaison, that I, that I implement those properly. There are forms that need to be filled out. There are also now, with two of the schools, they are not school readiness approved sites at this time. Because the only approved sites were Bishop, Vets, and Mahan. And that's what's in their, in the application that was put in for this year. So there are some pieces that need to be addressed and taken care of. And, and the council members deserve the ability to have information put to them beforehand so that they can review and process and understand before they can make an informed vote or an approval of all of the changes. So that is why, really why we didn't vote, because we had nothing. I couldn't give anything to the council members before the meeting. So.
That, I appreciate you explaining that for the group because that was my understanding. My question, though, Linda, came from what the mayor just stated, that the Office of, he had been informed that the Office of Early Childhood had not fully vetted this. So my question was, that was not my, that was not my understanding at all. My understanding, there were meetings even without me between Commissioner By and our early childhood coordinator. And they had, if you will, crunched the numbers. When, when I asked on the call, does the Office of Early Childhood have any, you know, worries? I need to be able to communicate to our Board of Ed if the School Readiness Council is in a position where they're going to approve this. Does the Office of Early Childhood have any worries that it's not in alignment? They didn't present any. I've not heard any. So my quest, my question comes off of the, the mayor saying that the Office of Early Childhood had crunched the numbers. And, and that, is that your understanding, Linda?
I am, yes, I'm still waiting to hear. I've been in a lot of contact with Christie and Cheryl, who are my state-level managers that I report to mostly. And they've been working with the leadership team on this. I know that there have been some meetings I've been a part of, some I have not. I know that there's a lot of discussion and I'm waiting to hear. I know that there's a lot of discussion and I'm waiting to hear from them. Um, because at one meeting, uh, the very first meeting, what I, what I heard was that there were um, there was a need to make sure that there were going to be school day, school year. And so I am just waiting to hear from them as well. In addition to not have had, I didn't have any information to even share with the council members beforehand. So yeah, I am still waiting to hear.
A different lane is the council and then the Office of Early Childhood. So my understanding is that the Office of Early Childhood worked with Jenna and certainly worked with, with, with our district and, and I'm assuming you to determine the number of slots. Um, and that's how we got to the numbers that I reported to you earlier. I have no way, um, I, I, I completely agree with your, your understanding of school readiness group. My question is that has there been an indication from the Office of Early Childhood that there was another uh component that was missing or that we needed to do, i- if you know?
I, I don't know because it hasn't been shared with me. What I was told was that leadership were running configurations and they had not, and so I haven't heard what the result of any of that is to again either be, and so the first I heard of the numbers that you presented yesterday, that was the first I have heard of any of the numbers. I mean, I can sort of come up with my own, but I had been not, not part of that. That's been uh strictly done at the OEC. Well, right, but at the same time, in my role as the School Readiness Liaison and having to um support and, and work uh effectively and successfully with the council, I need to have that information. So I can give them the information they need to make an informed and thoughtful decision for the children and the families in Norwich. So I have not heard yet, I have been, I was asked to send what you sent me yesterday. I was asked to forward that to the OEC for their review and I haven't heard back since. So.
Beth, Bai and all the folks that were on the call yesterday had that configuration um about a week ago. I'm trying, I'll look back in my emails, but that it, it was, it came out of, we weren't going to give it to the School Readiness Council until after the Office of Early Childhood um worked on, but.
Right, and I, I just haven't been a part of some of those meetings, so I can't, nothing has been said directly to me yet. I'm still waiting to hear from them for their guidance. And input, you're welcome.
All right, sorry, Senator Austin.
Thank you. Kathy is fine, I just didn't hear that well. Um, I'm sitting out on my porch. Um, so I did talk to the Office of Early Childhood Commissioner and um she indicated that she is waiting for uh to provide uh the direction as soon as the school board uh and the Office of Early Childhood has set that this is that the configuration is X. They wanna make sure that they are providing um the resources that you need uh for um, uh for programming. Um, and so uh, once the uh Board of Education indicates to the, directs the superintendent to do what the Board of Education would like to see done and that configuration will then be shared with the Office of Early Childhood will say. Um, and they have done all of the calculations to see uh any of the aforementioned um uh configurations and they will be providing resources. And as I said before, and I think Representative Wilson is on the call, I don't know if Representative uh Ryan is, I know he was gonna be out of state, uh but uh we are all going to work uh with our colleagues to provide the city with the funding that's necessary to support the program. Preschool is too important in a town that's not only a priority school district, it is a distressed municipality. It carries with those two uh qualifications that preschool would be uh all, uh, a definite need uh because of the number of, of younger families that we have um in Norwich that uh need these resources to really prepare um their children uh for uh a true uh step up in education. And so we're going to fight for whatever we can to make sure that um you have enough resources to cover a configuration. My al- ultimate goal for uh the city of Norwich is going to see that we get the funding for full day, full school ye- full year. Uh, I, I would um settle for full day, school year, full, full day, full school year as an interim step for us to get back to where we should be. Um, so whether we have to figure out how we build out a facility or what we have to do, that's the ultimate goal here is to provide that. And keep in mind, we not only made that change on um the Office of Early Childhood, we also changed uh the fact that someone must be five on the first day of school. Uh, so that's a change too. So we might see an increase in preschool for those young, uh, young people who are not quite five on the first.
You will, we saw that in Rhode Island. There will be a blip of a small cohort of kindergarten for one year and then forever um a, 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 a larger cohort in preschool. Um, but that was the right thing to do. Uh, so we appreciate that and thank you so much for your support.
Thank you, Senator Austin. I think, I think we as the board all uh, uh, are in agreement that our goal here is to have full-time, full-year uh preschool for, and you know, for school readiness. Uh, if it's, has to start off as full-time, uh, full school year, then that, that so be it. But it's, this has got it, that's a, part-time is not gonna, not gonna do it. Not, not, not for us and not for our, our kids and not for our parents. So that's gotta be uh a goal that has to be worked on and has to be worked on quickly. Um, and we need, that's what we need here. And uh, uh going forward, I would hope that um that's everybody else's thought um in this uh, uh, meeting tonight. Um, anybody else have any questions uh regarding this uh um, uh, again, item? I can see everybody. Uh, Peter, I'm sorry, Mayor Neistrom, go ahead.
Call me Peter, that's fine. Um, based on what you just said, I guess the question I would ask is, was, were there other configurations prior to this one being submitted for our consideration that sought that goal as well, school day, school year?
There were several other configurations that led up to this final configuration. Um, we incrementally added beyond the six P, AM, PM and the one full day smart start, um another full day program. Another balance moved things around because i- if the programs, you know, the programs now are at four different elementary schools. We wanted to make certain that families that are closest to those four elementary schools had a choice of full day or part day and that the team that assigns students to part day or full day could select um along with their parents, the best program to meet their needs. And so that was what I was talking about a little, a little earlier. Um, those very discreet conversations happened between um the larger meetings and they were held with Commissioner Bai and our early childhood coordinator. And they crunched the numbers is, is my understanding. And, and what was determined that met the needs of the school readiness grant, that met the needs of our anticipated three-year-old and four-year-old population was what I shared with you at the onset of meeting. I, I'd also like to take this opportunity to just put a shout out for those on the school building committee that although the historical numbers, um, keep, you know, historical numbers in a demo- demographic study of enrollment for preschool usually presume current preschool numbers, absent any sort of change. And so if the goal is universal preschool, which I would be very much in favor of, or universal full day, then that also has to be contemplated in the new building configurations. Um, and I'm just putting that out there as a, you can't, you can't achieve that dream if there's not space for them in the buildings that you're building. And so I, I know that there are several people here who uh, um, work very hard on that, that building committee. That, that needs to be uh shored up so that what Senator Austin said, which I think we all agree with, can, can be uh realized rather quickly.
I, I can tell you, Kristen, that I said the same thing to them two months ago. That they needed to continue to gain information in their calculations.
Thank you.
The true universe of students. Without that, you're lacking a whole group.
I appreciate that.
I need to say that. I'm just an ex-officio, but I did share that.
Uh, Bob, I think Christine has her hand up again.
I'm sorry, I can't see everybody on my screen, so I apologize. Christine?
Problem. In reference to, um, no problem, Bob. In reference to um what Kristen just said, all the architects that submitted um their uh applications, that, that was always included. So we're, we're definitely always including PK. So um you don't have to worry about that as far as space. So they're all very well uh informed on that. But of course, the projections, so that's it. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Anybody, any questions from the board? No more questions from the board? Okay. All right, thank you. Uh, let's move on to uh our second item on the agenda.
Uh, would this be the time to make a motion?
Yeah, I, I don't believe you have to do the motion yet. Because we're, we're going through unfinished business.
Well, this is, it, it, and that, we go ahead and as parliament, we go ahead and make a motion for that item so we can just get it, finish it on the table. The question is, what are we motioning for?
Well.
All right, well, if I could propose a motion, uh, the Board of Education directs the superintendent to add enough full-day, school-year, pre-K program slots from the operational budget so as not to jeopardize any school readiness grant funding nor to affect the twenty-three, twenty-four budget.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Aaron Daniels, I'll second that motion.
We have a motion on the floor and we have a second discussion on the board.
All right, uh, since I proposed the motion, I see this as an interim step just for this year. And hopefully, you know, with increased funding next year coming and uh losing some of the requirements with alliance funding, we may be able to direct more of that money into uh pre-K programs and offer a much more robust uh pre-K program. Uh, possibly all slots is full day, full year, and I mean, full day, school year with certain sections of full day, full year, which would be the eventual goal of the, the entire program.
That's a, and that's a, a great analogy, but.
That's not part of this motion. This motion is just to uh, to bring as many slots as possible to full day, school year as operationally possible, giving, giving increased funding coming from the state.
Yeah, I, I, um, that's a big, that's a, that, that's another risk factor. And um I'm, I'm thinking that um, it, why don't, why couldn't it be the uh full day, full year as, as the, uh, as the onsite? At, at the, at, right at the, right at the beginning.
Aaron Daniels, because it doesn't exist. That is not a statement. We're still at the, remember, we're still at the same point we were a week ago or two weeks ago. We are still at, this is what our front, the, the, the rules change July first. This is what they allow. We've shuffled some class, all we've done is shuffle some classrooms around to put, to, to, to create as many slots as possible that fall into the framework of what the state mandate mandates us to provide. Because that's, uh, remember, before everything else, we had a budget that covered this. This was not on our radar. Now, the new budget that we are, that we are living with does not give us those extra dollars. So until we have, uh, Mark is right on my, until we have those extra dollars guaranteed, we can't put the cart before the horse and tell the state, yes, we're gonna give you this program and we'll figure out the money because then we're right back where we started from. So we're, we're at the step of, yes, this is what we got. Thank you for your hard work. Do what you have to continue to do to make as many spaces as possible. But as of right now, the pop, uh, the school age population of Norwich will only accommodate this many spaces. That is where we are. And we're, what we're doing is saying, yes, that is what we want you to do.
I, I understand, but I, I would, but I would like, I would like something about the goal going forward that it eventually it gets to the full day, full school year. Because that's, because Al, that's what this, 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 that's what our community needs.
You're right. You are, you are absolutely correct, Chairman. You are absolutely correct. There is nobody that's gonna argue that point with you. The que- I, like, I, I was, you and I were here, well, you, you were probably sitting on the side, but I was here when we, when we went to full day kindergarten and how great a deal that was. And then we got this and now we understand, regardless of what some more conservative heads would say, this is important to our community to be able to do that. But until we have tho- those dollars guaranteed, those dollars in our hand, we, and so what, saying yes, that, so, so I guess it took, what I'm saying is it goes without saying that as the funding becomes available, we will make more slots available. We will, we, and, and because, like I said, we're at the build-out stage now. We gotta start building space if we wanna provide these extra seats. If we wanna provide for these extra, extra students, this extra time, these extra people. But the funding and the space don't allow it at this date, at this stage of, of where we are. So what we're saying with this motion is, thank you, continue with your, don't stop looking. But yes, do what you're doing right now to maintain, to make sure you're maintaining the state funding that we receiving. That's all we can do.
And plus, it has to follow the uh, the agenda as unfinished business, which is dealing with the twenty-three, twenty-four school budget. So as aspirational as a motion in, you know, aspirationally, we would love to do this, but we are, the motion is dealing with what's before us here and now. We can only deal with the funds that were given within the twenty-three, twenty-four school budget. That's it. And that's all this motion will address.
But I think we're cutting, I, 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 again, I, I apologize, but I, I think we're cutting the kids and the parents short. I would rather, I would rather think that we should direct this, the superintendent to work with uh OEC to, to garn- garner the, the funds for a full day. and full year uh program. But full day, and full school day, full school year does, it's great, but it doesn't, uh, it doesn't work for everyone and it doesn't work for our community. And that's, and that's what I'm trying to get across, and that's, and I, I don't want, I don't wanna beat a dead horse, but I know you know, I know what kind of a community we live in. I've lived here all my life. And all of you have too. So I, I'm, I'm thinking, I'm, I'm thinking towards the future. I'm not thinking for right now. I'm looking for towards the future. And you know, verbally, it, it, a verbal agreement is worth nothing. A, a directive or a, 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 a resolution or a, a motion i- in writing and approved or not approved, but if, if approved, is, is something more concrete. And that's what my feeling is. And that's, that's, that's just me, but um I'm open to any, anything uh to, to facilitate this.
Yeah, Greg has his hand up.
Yes, when we started this conversation before we ma- made the motion, um, there was a few questions and I was going to ask the same one about full day in school, full year and what that would cost. And you know, our ability to do so. And I think, you know, what Mr. Aldi is saying and, and what I would agree with is that we should make a directive to work towards that, to fi- fit, to get the numbers, to find out what our capability is. And like uh Mr. Aldi just said, to work with the Office of Early Childhood to make that happen.
That's, thank you, thank you, Greg.
All right.
Uh, any, any other discussion? I'm sorry. It's just there any other discussion by the members, members of the board?
Uh, Carleen has her hand up.
Thank you, Carleen. Uh, thank you, Mark. Carleen, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I, I, I'm hearing what you all are saying, and I would agree that starting off with the goal as, that we all have in mind uh for our community and, and for our children would be um, would be helpful. And then noting that, you know, based upon the information that we received today, um, that's uh the direction. So I, I would say maybe rewording, um, um, can you uh quickly read, read the motion again, Mark?
All right, uh, if you want, I could uh amend. All right, let me, let me try it again. Okay, the, the motion that I read was the, the Board of Education directs the superintendent uh to add enough full day, school year, pre-K program slots from the operational budget. So as not to jeopardize any school readiness grant funding, nor to affect the twenty-three, twenty-four budget. Um, I could amend uh, and to examine the possibility of adding full day, full year uh program slots.
It'd have to be a little bit more than I, you know, and furthermore, direct the superintendent to work with the Office of the uh Early Childhood. Right? To uh create enough funds for full day, full year. That's, that's what I was trying to, trying to get across, like that's.
At, at some point before you vote, may I ask a clarifying question if it's appropriate?
It's, well, we're under discussion right now by the board. Um, and unfortunately, you're not part of the board.
Yep, that's okay. No problem.
Um.
I haven't heard from.
Would it be more appropriate to, to do a second motion then?
I, I would, well, you can't, you have a motion on the floor, but I would do a, 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 you know, roll call.
I'd do a roll call, yeah.
Yeah, so that we get this in, and then I would probably suggest that we do a second motion to, because that, that sounds, I mean, this motion is to deal with what's before us in this budget. And, and then the, the other the aspirational thing, that seems like a, a further directive uh beyond what this motion has. Uh, Bob, Christine has her hand up.
Christine, thank you.
Question, um. I'm just concerned, um, the cost for, I can understand your aspirations, um, but the cost um would have to be carried by the state if we were going to go full debt. I mean, I, we would definitely have to put this before I would think, our taxpayers, because we're basically would be um giving around the clock care, you know, like daycare too, kind of, you know. But of course, with schooling, um, throughout the summer. I'm just wondering about backlash also.
Okay. Kevin, you have a hand up?
No, I don't have my hand up. All, all I just want us to do, and you know, I agree with uh what, what Bob and um Carleen and Greg mentioned, is you know, let's not just shortchange the, the parents and the children. You know, let's aim for the full day, full school year. And I agree, let's direct the superintendent uh to work with EOC and have them find more money uh for this, so. Clear and simple.
That, that, that sounds like a second motion to me.
Yeah.
All right, we have a motion on the floor and we have a second. Um, I'm gonna go continue it. Is there any further discussion on the initial motion made by uh Vice Chair Mark Kulos? Anybody from the uh board?
Um, just the wording change uh for me, it, the, I think the message around, we are um adding full, full day school year, and other to not lose the school readiness funding is a little bit, so maybe I would reword it just to meet some of the requirement for that. Because in, our intention is not to lose that, is to provide um the services that our children need. So I would just, it's just a minor tweak, just saying, it's not to lose it, it's just to provide the valuable services that's needed in our community, that's all.
Can they, or Mark, can you reread that for Carleen and?
All right, uh, so the, the relevant part, yeah, the, that she was interested was uh to uh provide enough slots from the operational budget, so as not to jeopardize any school readiness grant funding. Um, do you have a suggestion for uh amending that, Carleen?
I believe uh Dr. Strangfellow noted that as of July first, there was new state recommendation in regard to the um um full day, full academic year. So what is being proposed tonight will help meet some of that criteria. I'm not exactly sure how to word it, but I just wanted to note that, that's all.
So as, so as to comply with school readiness funding, does that sound better?
Yes.
And to provide uh 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 pre-K services to the community?
That works for me.
All right. All right, so uh, let me uh amend my motion then. Um.
You already, we already have a motion on the floor.
Okay, yeah, the motion's on the floor, all right.
Motion's on the floor. And it's at, and it's at a second, we're, right now, we're in discussion. Now, now, if you want to amend it, you'd have to do a whole new, a, a, a whole new uh motion.
Right, so uh Carleen, if you're, if you're willing to amend the motion, then we would vote on the amendment first and then vote on the, the original motion.
Yep, that's the correct way to do it.
Yes, I would, uh, if you could read the final amendment motion, that would be great. I'll make that motion.
All right, um. The Board of Ed uh directs the superintendent to add enough uh full day, school year, pre-K program slots from the operational budget. So as to comply with school readiness grant funding. And not to affect the twenty-three, twenty-four school budget.
Uh, that, no, that's, that's.
No.
No.
Not quite.
No.
All right.
What we're trying to, what we're trying to accomplish here is to direct the superintendent to comply with the uh school readiness program uh based on the ruling of July first, two thousand and twenty-three. Whereas it's now school, full school day, full school year.
Right.
That's what, that's what we're trying to do.
I thought we were having that second part, right.
But that, that's what the numbers that she gave us at the beginning did. She is compliant with them within, to, to maximize the number of students that have some participation. Those, that was my understanding of what she gave us. She has maximized all the numbers that she had to do using the new formula to get us there. We are at capacity.
So, so what the July first uh change was, she would not the, then have to apply for a, a waiver from the state. Because we are now in compliance with the law as it stands as of July first.
Exactly. That was my understanding of what she did. She's already done that, and we're saying, yes, go for it. With the motion that you, your original motion says that, she is doing that.
That's, I don't think that could save me that's entirely.
Twenty-four years, her, or, or the, the description that she gave, the slots that she provided us with. That is where we are right now.
All right. Now, what were your concerns, Bob, again?
Uh, I'm, I'm, I'm uh.
You're still trying to digest.
No, I'm, I'm good. I'm, I'm good.
All right.
I had to step away. Has everybody spoken? Again, we don't have everybody around the table, so we, we really need you to say something.
I didn't, I, I haven't heard from Heather. I have not heard from uh James. Um, I, I'd heard very little from Greg, but I wanna hear from everybody, please.
I think Heather had to go back up to Josh. She was.
Okay, I'm sorry. I know, I'm, I'm available now. I was in the elevator.
There you go.
No, you have any?
I just have, like, it makes me really sad that we even have to even having this conversation. But um we, we need to, I need to make sure that we are doing everything in our power to make sure that with, like what Bob Aldy said. To make sure that we are going full year, you know what I mean?
Full year, full, full school year, full day?
Yes, thank you. No, wait, full year, full day, right? The one where that does the summer. I mean, that's what we, you know what I mean? That's what our community needs. Is what I'm saying, but I mean, I do understand the situation that we are in. And that's pretty much.
Okay, so, so the, so the, the motion right now covers full school day, full school year.
Full school year.
Yeah.
For some students, yes.
Yes, full day, full school year for the students.
Right, uh, as allowed by the budget or possible increase in funds from the OEC and the state.
As, as it stands today, we can't base.
We can't, yeah, yeah, you, you don't, you, you can't say, well, we're gonna get funding in the next two, no, you, no. We're telling, she's gonna have to, the, the Dr. Strangfellow has to find the, this, the availability, the seats and, and find the funding in our budget for full, full school day, full school year. For twenty-three, twenty-four.
And those, those, those funds are not in the, the mix right now.
Yes, they are. They are. That's, that's what the whole point. Right now, we don't have to do anything to the budget. All we're saying is, thank you for your hard work, that you have found these extras, that you have found the space to put in these extra slots.
Right.
Because we have more slots, they're just not all the slots that we wanted.
Right, but.
And they're definitely more than we had on September seventh. Right, no, September, oh, excuse me, not September, July fifth. There are more slots than we had July fifth. That's what we're, we're applauding. Keep, keep up the good work. Yes, the adjustment has been made. This is the new configuration. And yes, it is very hard to understand, but this is as far as we can go without additional funding, additional funding from outside the city of Norwich. That is where we are.
I just want to say that I'm in agreement with the original motion. All I wanted to remove is the wording to not lose where to comply with. That's the only directive that I, that I would have, that's the only thing I wanna change.
All right, so, so change jeopardized to comply.
Yes.
Um, Jim Paulson.
It sounds like a good plan, what we've discussed. I don't have anything else to, to say right now.
Thank you, Jim. Is there any further discussion on the initial, on the original motion? Hearing none. Uh, Amber, call the roll, please. I say, I'm sorry, call the vote. I apologize. Call the vote.
Um, Mark Kulos?
Yes.
Heather Fowler?
Yes.
Christine Distasio?
Yes.
James Paulson?
Yes.
Kevin Seitani?
Yes.
Carleen Charmless?
Yes.
Greg Perry?
Yes.
Al Daniels?
Yes.
Chairman Aldi?
Uh, yes.
Uh, motion passes nine to zero.
Thank you, uh, Amber. Um, I will entertain it. I will entertain another motion on the same subject, on the same uh, uh, agenda item.
Okay, uh, let me give it a shot and then we can uh uh adjust the language as possible.
Go any further, we can't. This is a special.
Oh, that's right, because it's.
Only cover the items that are on the agenda. We can't.
That's correct.
It's, wait a minute. No, it's part of the twenty-three, twenty-four budget.
Same.
It's the same item.
All right, this.
It's the same, it's a, it's a same item. It's, it's all we're, all we're doing is bifurcating a, a, uh, uh, or going off, not bifurcating, but we're adding an additional, uh, uh, an additional clause or an additional motion to, to, to hopefully direct her to wo- work in conjunction with the OEC to uh facilitate, uh, wait a minute, no, hang on. Maybe he's right.
Yeah, cuz there's really no guarantee that uh this motion would be covered under twenty-three, twenty-four budget.
And, and that's what I'm, even without that being covered. That's Superintendent one oh one. Go find people with money and have them give it to us. I don't think we need to tell her to do that.
But that's, and that's why I wanted to get in, cuz I, my, my personal goal is I wanna see full school year, I'm sorry, full time, full day, full year. I don't like this, this, you know, cutting out the uh summertime because parents, parents gotta work. You know, this, those machines having, having the summer off, unless they, they wanted to become a teacher.
You are absolutely correct on, but again, I don't think we have to tell anybody in our administration that in, in for, if you're working for Norwich, that is your goal. And I know, again, as I mentioned before, there are some more conservative heads that don't think that that's our job. We know that it is.
I mean, that, that's their twenty-four, seven job. Beat every bush and turn over every rock, looking for every spare dime. I mean, that, that's their twenty-four, seven job. Beat every bush and turn over every rock looking for every spare dime in the world.
Just, it's just to co- you know, collaborate with the, with the state, uh, oh, we, you know, the Office of Early Childhood. And any other uh, a faction that are up there. And I'm, I, I'm pretty sure that you. Uh, Kristen, uh, Dr. Springfield, I'm sure you understand where we're coming from. I hope so anyways. You still with us?
Yes, sorry, I nodded. Yes, I understand where you're going.
It's crucial. We, we, we have this right now, but wh- what we do, we need it. We. We are in, like we said, we are in a distressed community. We need it. Full day, full year. And that's what we need. Okay, I'm not gonna beat this anymore. Um. Moving on to uh, the other agenda item, um, a report from uh, Mr. Sapansky on our food service.
Oh, good evening, everyone, and I'll try to be as brief as I can, and I apologize, I. Not gonna be able to share my screen. I have some kind of major computer issues, so I'm fortunate to be on here. Um, I'll start with an update on the contract and then summer meals. On Thursday afternoon, July sixth, the state approved our contract uh, with the Compass Group uh, Chartwell's Division. So between Thursday afternoon and Friday morning, I worked with uh. Chartwell's Legal Group and we fully executed the contract and sent that up to the state. Once that was done, the office that uh, does the summer meals opened our application for the remaining sites. From the original uh, summer meal program that had not been picked up by Groton and New London. So I worked on that Friday afternoon and Friday evening and the state had to do some changes Friday night. They did their changes and on Saturday, uh, I did what I needed to do and uh. Teresa Meneri, if I say her name correctly, at the state, she worked all weekend on it with me as well and. She approved the district's ability to serve summer meals on those remaining sites at quarter of six Saturday evening. So then. Um, I had to get in contact with Chartwell's. They had started to mobilize on uh, Friday, once the contract was approved. We sent notices out to the family and we actually began starting uh, summer meals on um. Monday morning of this past week. So before I get into that, I just want to talk briefly about the summer meal program. Um, the program we have um, was the program that was started, so um. There were twenty-three sites on the original application. So we're using, we're doing the sites. We can't make changes to that at this point. So the sites we're serving are the sites we're serving. Um, I went back and looked historically and when COVID came three years ago, that's when. Cities uh, and school districts were feeding everyone. There were no requirements to eat meals on site, was grab and go, and basically the state of Connecticut fed the world everywhere. Can every, I assume everyone can hear me. Um. Is that a yes?
Yes, Bob, everyone can hear you.
Yes, here.
That's, that's good. So the rules have changed now and on the summer meal sites, um, you're supposed to consume the meals on site. So I don't know why we have certain sites or why they were chosen, but we're operating under the existing sites, so. I went back and started looking at some of the historical numbers for the last two years after COVID. And some of the small, I'll call them street side sites that were having, the numbers started to decline. I looked at the lowest site, so. I looked at July of the last two years and. If I look two years ago, some of the sites might have been serving four meals a day in terms of lunches. Last year, they might have been down to one meal every other day. Um, two or three meals a day on the lower numbered sites. So I kind of put my business hat on and if you're gonna go into business and. Do something, you have to have a product that's needed and you have to do correct marketing. So I, I think of Air Jordans. You know, was there a need for Air Jordans or was Nike with Michael Jordan and marketing create the need? But, and we all know that. That need is out there and it's being satisfied. I think everyone in this room will agree that there's a need for summer meals in Norwich. So we have thirty-three hundred kids under, uh, in the K through eight uh, program. How many of these meals should we be serving? Now, I, I look at. The, the two or three larger sites, which are N F A and the rec programs, there you have a captive audience. They're, they're, rec is having programs in a school. The kids come there all day, so we're gonna serve meals. There's a hundred kids in the program. We're probably gonna serve close to a hundred meals. The other sites are drive and go. Um, from a community standpoint. I don't think we should operate a site if we're serving one lunch every other day. That one lunch is important, but we need to figure out next year the best way to do it. And what we would anticipate doing would be working with the. City groups, uh, you know, our, our legislators, if, if Darrell Wilson is responsible on his district, he knows his district best. Uh, his section, where, where should we serve meals? We should meet with the uh, human services sections of the city. And decide what's the best way to reach the most people, cuz we want to serve meals to kids. So we're gonna look at that next year. This year, we can't change the application, so we'll do what we have, uh, and we'll look to do that uh, going forward next year. So that's a little bit about the program. So we started Monday. And to launch a new business, Monday with outdoor sites. Was probably the worst day on the planet to do it. If you recall, we got two or three inches of rain. Uh, rained right up until eleven o'clock. So it was the first day of our E S Y program and maybe the rain kept away some students. So participation was very low. We only, we served ninety-four breakfasts because those are the kids that are in the school system eating, but we. At eleven sites out amongst the city, we only served ten lunches. So that was, that was disappointing. Um. It picked up day two, day three and day four. The breakfast numbers continue to be consistent at the E S Y program. And again, as I said. The kids are there, they're gonna eat because they're inside the building. They have a place to eat. Uh, we've served seventy-one, fifty-one and fifty-six lunches at eleven sites. But that's not because of Chartwell's doing it or we had this disruption. I'm looking back at last year and at a site you served in twenty serving days in. July, you served nine lunches total. So. We'll get through this summer, but for next year, we want to feed as many people as possible and we're gonna reach out. To whether it's churches, community leaders and decide where to eat. Uh, we went out to some of these street side locations and I don't know what the criteria was for selecting them, but. Some of them are on a neighborhood street. You parked on the side of the road. It's not a safe place for employees. It's not a safe place for families, and if they're supposed to eat on site, there's no place to sit. You know, if we're gonna do, we want to go where the kids are. If Mohegan Park Pond is a popular place, we'll try to go there. So that's. What we're doing now and where we plan on going. Um, so I don't know if anyone has any questions about the summer meal program. If they do, I'll take them now.
Questions from the board?
I guess, um. I have one question, Bob, and I just want, it's actually more of a, maybe you could send it to me later. Um, and the documents that you sent over with the menus.
Yeah, I'm gonna talk about that in a minute. I just wanted to get summer program out, and then I'm gonna give a brief thing on starting up with Chartwell's for you guys.
Okay, well, I just, when I noticed the doc, I'm sorry that this may be the wrong time, but when I noticed the document you sent over. You sent over, um, like breakfast and lunch for Chartwell's, but we only got breakfast from, um. What we currently have, and I don't really feel like that's a fair, um. You know what I mean? Like, cuz it seems like you were trying to say like that they're healthier or whatever, but I just want to say that they are. Our previous food service was just as good, healthy wise.
No, I'm, I didn't intend on sending lunch. If you got lunch, that's a mistake. They were both breakfast menus and I was gonna talk about it.
Okay, cuz I did get a car, I got a Chartwell's lunch and I was expect, then I was expecting a Norwich Public Schools lunch and there wasn't one. All right, thank you.
Yep. Anyway, if there, there are no questions, I'll talk briefly about the kickoff with Chartwell's as a company, maybe some of the concerns that. The board might have had might be put to rest for now.
I'm sorry, uh, Mr. Chair, I think Christine had a question also.
Uh, it was answered.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, Bob.
Okay, okay. Chartwell started for real on Monday and. Um, this was their first real opportunity to come into the district, inspect kitchens and start the program. Uh, I had a chance to spend quite a bit of time with the director and the assistant director. From an administrative standpoint, we will have three, what I'd call management personnel on site. The director will be based at Kelly, the assistant director will be based at Global. And the executive chef will be based at the largest elementary school most likely. Um. They've begun the interview process for hiring people, the um. Director, he's very energetic, very engaging. He wants to do great things and from his philosophy is that it's all about the kids. He wants to create a positive environment and so on and so forth. Uh, it's really all about the students and we want to find out what the students want to eat and we want to serve that to them. Um, Nazam, Nazam Sad is his name. Um. He reached out to the former Norwich employees, invited them to come in. Meet with him one-on-one to discuss what it would be like to work for Chartwell's. And I believe yesterday he spent about five or six hours interviewing former employees who were interested and. I have the number correctly, nine of those people have signed on to come back to start work and they're pretty, seemed pretty excited after he met with them. Uh, he asked them very honest questions. He, he said. You know, we're gonna honor your wages, whatever you earned in Norwich Public Schools, we will pay you. Uh, you can work in the school you like before, so tell me what are your worries? And he had great dialogue with him and. He's, they're doing the best they can with that. So that's where they stand from uh, that standpoint. Um, some of the questions that came up in the last meeting, you know, what's gonna be different, um, so on and so forth. Keep in mind, I've only been here four days. Uh, there'll be some changes, you'll see right away, and I think when we do board reports and presentations. In the new year, these things will be kind of self-evident. Uh, the reason I sent you the menus and I intended to send only breakfast, and I think that's what you had. I sent three months of actual Norwich Public Schools breakfast. And one observation that came to my mind is the core entree. For elementary and middle schools is the same. Elementary kids are eating the same breakfast that uh, middle school kids are. And if you look at that menu, there really isn't a lot of deviation. The core entree. Seems to be cereal with grams, with a, a bagel and cream cheese and, you know, some fruit and other things like that. And it's basically Monday through Friday. Uh, we don't seem to offer, we weren't offering hot breakfasts. We want to offer things, if you look on that menu, that, that's not our. Um, and say that, okay, Amber was able to share a screen. That's the, that's our real. Elementary school and middle school breakfast and it doesn't change too much from day to day. So if you knew the menu on March first. You knew the menu on May twenty-fifth. So the Chartwell's menu I sent you is not the exact menu we will have. It's a sample menu. They're in the process of creating the menu for us. Certain things will be the same. We want to serve hot breakfasts. You know, we don't serve hot breakfasts now. We, we will be serving things like breakfast burritos. Uh, breakfast sandwiches. They have at the middle school, it might be made to order omelets. Uh, turkey, ham and egg cheese bagels or turkey breakfast sausage peaches, things like that. So this is just a. They'll be serving parfaits and uh, smoothies and things like that. And if they find out the kids that don't eat that, we'll change. Uh, there's gonna be active engagement and participation. And things like that. So I just wanted to give you a little sample on some of the things that will be self-evident first day of school. Uh, I can share with you in a couple of weeks, the actual menus, what will happen in September, and we will post those. Some changes they've already made. All baked goods will be fresh baked goods. They have arrangements with a bakery. So there'll be no, um, it'll be whole wheat, fresh baked bread. Uh, we will become a peanut butter free district on uh, September fifth. Uh. We currently do serve peanut butter, but the risk is too great. Uh, we'll use a product called sun butter. Uh, so those are just some of the changes coming off the top of the head, and I'm not gonna, this isn't a food service meeting about. Things, but I just wanted to think I'm, I'm pretty excited about the things we're gonna offer. And there's a actual sample menu. There's variety. Uh, the menu is slightly different for the middle schools versus the uh, elementary schools. The, one of the benefits of things with, we're gonna think of is student engagement. Uh, we want. Students to be involved and be excited about coming in to eat food. Uh, some of the changes a little, like if, if I had it to show you, it was in my presentation. Even just the bag that we're doing the uh, meals with now. We used to use a brown bag or a white plain bag. This bag is, I don't say it's like a McDonald's bag, but. Every bag, every inch of the bag is covered with something. There's. Educational information about weights and measures and cups. Uh, there's uh, stuff about the Discovery Kitchen. There's a quiz on uh, kitchen utensils. What are these things? So that, the attempt is to. Make this a better program for our students and we want as many former public school employees to work here. Uh, and a percentage of them are coming back and they're giving it a chance, so um, I, I think I'll stop with that. Um, and as we open the school year, you'll. Oh, I do, I want, want to add one more thing. Another benefit of, of company like Chartwell's. Farm to school and fresh produce is a big thing. And they buy from a whole host of uh, G A P, which is Good Agricultural Practice Certified Farms. But they're large enough where they contract with specific certified farms to produce. Specific quantities just for them. So I know already in September. The menu will contain fresh potatoes, yellow squash, zucchini and tomatoes from a Connecticut farm. It's guaranteed be, unless they crops fail because they have a contract with farms. They don't have to go seek it out from other farms. In October, they'll be featuring fresh grown potatoes, carrots and kale. I went through our supper, our lunch menus for the entire year and. Something like kale will be a completely new experience for a Norwich public student. It's, it's never been served in the past year. Um, November will have potatoes and butternut squash. So those are just a few of the things that will be changed. Based on three days of work. So there's gonna be a lot of new and exciting things and um, programs coming forward that. The intent is to make kids excited about eating, to learn about cooking. Um, and yes, we have to follow the same nutritional guidelines uh, that the state has, but we want to try to make it. Uh, an experience for them and uh, fun. There'll be educational programs that'll go into the classroom if. Principals and uh, buildings are willing to do that sort of thing. So in your board reports going forward in the new year, you're gonna be seeing food services featured more because it's gonna be something to talk about. So I'll end with that, and if you have any questions or comments, I'd be glad to take them.
Okay, um, every, that sounds really, really great. I really, really like the fact that, you know, I like the local produce anyway, which. Our previous food service department also had. So I just, I, I want to make sure that we're not making a comparison against them where they're so much better because our team was already doing that, but that's not really my question. My question is, are they gonna be doing cold stuff? Because like cold cereal, because most children under the age of ten. They don't want an omelet or a breakfast burrito. They want a cereal. They want cereal. That's what they eat. Um, so I want to make sure that, and, and also time consuming for kids to go and order an omelet. They only have like twenty-five minutes for lunch. If you've got every kid wanting an omelet.
Yeah, to your question.
Are you gonna make longer lunchtimes?
Yeah, no, to your, to your question, Heather, they're gonna do what works and.
Okay.
Some, some kids are very regimented. They want to have cereal in the morning and if that cereal will be an option, uh, and if you look at the Chartwell's menu. They have items like the frosted cornflakes as, it's, they have entrees as options. They have side dishes.
I may have missed that. I.
Oh, yeah, they, they have side dishes.
At the moment, but I just want to make sure, cuz I know if, if I send my eight-year-old to school to eat breakfast and only thing that are there are omelets and breakfast. Uh, my kid's gonna be hungry.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to make sure that, I mean, a lot of the younger kids are cereal. I mean, the older kids, the middle school kids are gonna absolutely love that and they're gonna totally benefit.
The burritos, yeah. We will find out what worked. We'll find out. We will find out what works. We'll find out what works, given the time constraints. And if a particular school can't do something, uh, you know, if they grab and go and eat it in the classroom, the mess made from eating a muffin is no less than the mess made from eating a hot burrito. Uh, we want to get, we want to offer hot meals as an option. And I think a muffin from a bakery is a better option than a hostess muffin and or wrapped cellophane or wherever it comes from. Uh, all of our, all of our baked goods will be fresh. And I'm not doing a comparison. I'm just, I'm not saying what we had was bad.
Understand how I, it, it seemed at first, I got the menus, they, it looked like a comparison that you were trying to show.
It is to that extent. It is, but I'm not, I'm not saying anything negative about it.
I just want to say that, um, you know, Erin, our old food service department manager, she's the one who started the farm to school and got the grants and the equipment to do it. So I would just like, I just really would like for her to get that credit for the fact that she has done well. And she just wants, they all want to hear you say, you know, like, it kind of went to, I'm sorry that you felt the way it went down. I'm sorry that my, that was, that was not my intention, but it happened and I am sorry. They really need to hear that.
Erin starred, Erin started the food processing center and that's an amazing thing. It's the only licensed thing of its kind in the state. The farm to school program is a state program that was started by the state. That's a statewide program, but the kitchen processing center.
She was involved in getting the grants and getting her department to be using those ingredients. And I just want to make sure that we give credit where credit is due. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Um, I just had a quick ask for Bob. Thank you so much for that update. Um, um, and for sharing all that information. Could you circulate that to Amber to post on board that? Because I was trying to follow through and I didn't capture everything. So if you could.
Um, Carleen, I did email it to everybody, um, earlier this afternoon.
Okay, I will look to my.
I can put it on board docs as well, though.
And, and I would just remind everyone that the Chartwell's menu is a sample menu. I'll have the actual September menu in about a week.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Carleen. Is there anybody else from the board? Mark, sorry.
I think Greg had his hand up first. I'll let Greg go first.
I'm not sure who was first. This is a less of a question, more of a request, Bob. Um, just, I, I was trying to write down and keep up with some of the stuff you were sharing about the Chartwell's program. Um, if you could share with us a report or just some of that information in writing so that we can have it. Because I, I wasn't fast enough, uh, just about the structure and some of the other things happening. That'd be awesome. I know those will come in the board reports in the future, um, but just for an introduction, like where we are, what they're doing, we'd like that.
Yeah, I'll be, I can send out the thing tomorrow to everyone on the board. I apologize for that. But it's start, it's almost like starting a new business. This, uh, like today, the, I'll call it their management team came to tour all the facilities that consisted of an executive chef, the directors, um, the marketing people to see how do we promote the food service program? What can we do to make things better? And just to give you a perspective, this, uh, this is one response to the RFP. So every food service company produced like a 500-page document, on why they would be the best thing since sliced toast to be chosen. So it, it's an extensive piece of work. And yes, there's a lot of fluff and pictures in there and you have to sort out what's real and what is just a picture. And one of the requirements of the RFP is that they need to provide the resume and qualifications of who your director will be and so on and so forth. And, uh, he had a pretty impressive resume. He was actually the, uh, in 2022, the national chef of the year for the entire country in Chartwells. So you, you know, you always see nice things on paper and then when you meet someone, maybe it's not all it was billed up to. But I, I will say, uh, and everyone who's met, uh, Nazim is, he's everything I expected and then more. So I'm, I'm, the district, we're quite pleased to have him as, as our director to start this new venture. And, and he's very nice man. He's just all about the kids. He just wants to make, and he, he has a basic philosophy that if the staff won't eat the food, if he, he won't eat the food, if I won't eat the food, how do we expect students? So he wants to make meals that any staff member wants to meet, eat. So some of the questions he was asking the people is what meal were you most proud of serving? You know, he wants engagement and he's just an open and honest person. So I think I couldn't have handpicked a better person right now to start this new venture.
Thanks, Bob. Mark?
Yeah, my internet dropped out there for a moment. Um, all right, Bob. Uh, are they still gonna be, uh, keeping the processing kitchen going?
The intent is to expand that and, uh, with their farm to school connections to grow it into a bigger thing. That was one of the requirements in the RFP. Well, you know, how can you make this a, a better system?
So they're gonna share that, I imagine, first with the other Chartwell location schools and then.
No, that's, no, this is, they're, they're strictly, I think of them as Norwich employees. I'm not going to look at them as any differently than, uh, a Norse. Their focus is Norwich Public Schools.
All right. So, so their processing kitchen will just be for NPS use only?
They're not, they're not using that to process food for other Chartwells districts.
All right. Thank you.
That same thing go for the, uh, the prepping stations at the, uh, schools that were the prepping stations are right now, Bob?
I, I, I didn't quite get all that.
That, that same, uh, hold true for, I know we have a couple of, uh, schools that are merely prepping stations. Is that just prepping just for the?
That's just the summer. There's a full kitchen in every school. So each kitchen will be manned and they'll, uh, be cooking for each individual school at, at, just like as it were, as it were.
Um, any other? Can't see any other. Greg, you got a question?
Christine and Heather. I was just trying to say Christine's had her hand up for a while and now Heather too.
All right, go ahead, Christine.
Uh, just, I, I'm just curious, um, when they toured our facilities, um, Bob, did they feel as though they had all the adequate, uh, adequate equipment? I'm just wondering.
Yeah, that, that was interesting. Uh, one of the first things Nizam noticed was every kitchen had a microwave oven in it. So his first question to me was, why do we have a mic, a microwave in a commercial kitchen? There's no place for a microwave here. All food should be cooked in an oven. So he immediately took all of those out.
I wonder if just the staff was using it.
No, the staff was using it and he, he asked questions and, um, sometimes it was used to warm food. Um, at Kelly, we discovered that the range hood was not operational and it had been shut off on the roof.
Oh, my goodness.
I don't want to assume things, but you're not doing a lot of, um, logically big scale cooking if your range hood's not operational. And, um, our facilities director and HVAC person went up on, they didn't know it was not working. So he's, he's learning things like that. He's disinfecting the coolers and, um, things like that.
Yeah, I know there's a lot that goes on in the kitchen because I worked, I was checking on the summer.
I haven't talked to him since they, they spent all day going to each school. They weren't sure if they were gonna make it to every school today. Uh, so they are going through that with a fine-tooth comb. And, you know, he stressed that the employees he met with, they will, they had great conversations and, uh,
Very good, very good. Good to hear.
Heather?
I just wanted to ask, um, Bob, I know that you had said that, um, you said that there were a percentage of the food staff or the food service people were coming back. Do you have, um, a number figure for that? How much percentage has come back?
No, I don't have a percentage. He told me eight or nine have come back. Uh, you know, through the grapevine, I've heard that some people have, uh, found employment with other school districts and I'm happy for them. So they're not unemployed. Uh, there should be no one, no former worker should not be without a job at their same rate of pay unless they made that personal choice. Uh, they are honored, you know, there's been a lot of stuff.
Like their senior, I mean, they wouldn't have had their seniority.
Well, no, that, that's true. And I'm not saying that. I'm just saying as far as the rate of pay.
For in our life is seniority.
I'm saying as far as the rate of pay goes, regardless of what you see advertised for starting pay or what people say in social media, any Norwich employee would be honored at the pre-existing wage rate when they work for Norwich Public Schools.
Okay, cuz I know that, I know that the new hire is 1834 for a food man, for the.
Yeah, but if you were, if you were a food.
But if you were a food manager before and you were making 20, you would stay at 20.
You'll make, you will make the same pay and former Norwich employees imply in a, apply in a different venue or avenue than a non-Norwich employee.
Is there any way that you could, um, pass that information along to me as to where the former, um, food service workers are supposed to go? Because you just said it was a different venue for them to apply.
Well, it's, it's advertised and.
Service ladies, I can maybe get some more of them.
I can get you, I can get you the contact people to contact, but he's reached out to all, they've reached out to all the former employees, I believe. Personal phone calls and they were invited by email.
No, and I do understand that, but a lot of them are under the impression that they would not be given what they were making when they left. So that was a good, that was a big reason why a lot of them left.
The, the people who came in thanked Nizam. They had pleasant conversations. A few of them said, we can't wait to get started. So it was very positive and I'm sure food service workers are a close community. And I'm, if they had a good experience, they're probably gonna share it with their fellow coworkers. Just like if they had a bad experience, they're gonna go share that as well.
You, Bob. Uh, Mr. Paulson?
Uh, yeah, did the, uh, former employees, did they have a pension? And will they?
They could have elected to participate if they met the qualifications. It's a city pension plan. Not all employees do. Because if you participate in the pension, the, uh, contribution rate is eight and a half percent of your pay. And I, I don't know off the top of my head what the qualification criteria are in terms of number of hours to work.
Okay. Thanks.
Believe, um, any?
And, um, but I'm sorry, Bob, one more thing. If you could just make sure you send me that contact information so that I can just pass it along to the ladies who, there are a few that are emailing, are texting me right now saying they've never been contacted. So if I could get that point of contact so that I could.
I will email you that first thing in the morning.
I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Reference to the, uh, con, in, in reference to the pensions, that they, the, the, they're all unionized members. They belong to the pension plan. If they were, uh, if they were, um, oh gosh, what's the word I'm trying to say now?
Fested, fested.
Fested, thank you. If, so that pension will remain, uh, in their, their plan until they're eligible to, uh, to retrieve it. Um, at the, that, or when, when the, it comes to fruition. Um, a pension money that was, uh, put in to, by the employees will be paid out to them, uh, with interest. So they, they, there is, there is no loss of pension in that respect.
I will say, not every employee was a member of the union either.
Okay.
And that was by their own individual.
By choice. Okay, yep. Is there any other questions from the, uh, board?
Uh, yeah, Bob, I have a brief one. Um, for, uh, Bob, um, they do know that we're undergoing the, the school building project, correct?
Oh, yes, and the timing was, uh, excellent because, and correct me if I'm wrong, Kristen, was it Tuesday afternoon? We, uh, the cabinet level members of NPS along with Mark Betancourt and, uh, representatives from CSG had an hour and a half meeting regarding space allocation. Uh, so in that space was the food service designed, uh, in terms of square footage. So I gave that to the director for him to review and see if it was adequate. We're trying to reduce, I believe we have about 3,100 square feet to reduce. So they were targeting areas. So he did provide CSG with feedback and for the most part, most of the spaces were okay. The dining space, for example, for students seemed to be the adequate size. After they had made some reductions, it seems like the office space and possibly cooler sizes is a little undersized. And if you're gonna have 600, um, students of 597, you, you can't shortchange some of those areas. But Kristen, Tamara and Lisa have some hard decisions to make, trying to make certain things fit because of whether it's preschool numbers of slots to spaces and to have or, you know, reading rooms and the whole nine yards, the space is only so big.
Well, what was thought to be a school within a school is not turning out to be a, uh, at all, so. That is disappointing.
All right. So, yeah, I, I just want to make sure that they were in on the design process, you know?
They were involved now with these total square footage allotted. And then once the city hires architects and, uh, makes things fit. And as we all learned in our meeting with CSG, the space might be 3,400 square feet now for something. But when the architects get down to it to achieve your goals, maybe you only need 3,200 because they fit things in where, uh, where it belongs.
Right. And then, uh, you're not gonna need a space for a microwave oven any longer.
Yeah, though that, yeah, they, they're gone.
As long as the employees have a lounge area for them when they take their breaks and then they can have their microwave there.
Okay. Anything else?
Oh, I just wanted to mention, we're doing the architect interviews next week on the 18th, the top three.
Anything else on, from the agenda? All right, hearing none, I like, I entertain a motion for a, um, for adjournment.
I second that motion.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Carleen is making the motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Have a second?
And then I second that motion.
Okay, all was in favor?
Hi.
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 Unanimous. Thank you, everyone, for attending tonight. It was very informative. Um, I think we learned a lot and, uh, hopefully going forward, we'll, uh, we'll meet our goals. Rather hopefully quickly before anything really happens. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you to our legislators who were in on this meeting. Appreciate your help.